Yes, Mrs. Thompson, thank you. Mrs. Elbrey? Mrs. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Duckman?
Present.
Mr. Gresh?
Present.
Mrs. Jurek? He's not right, okay. Mrs. Markle?
Present.
Mrs. Scott, present, and Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Senator President.
Procedure for public participation prepared statements that are to be read to the board shall be presented to the board president at our address. Comments on agenda edits will be provided by rising and coaching member home and stating their name and address and signing on as she provided. To be directed up to three minutes to address the board. Your three minute time limit will start when you receive. When the agreements are over, you will be asked to be seated. Any item that is not in the agenda edits will also be designated section at the end of the agenda. So agenda edits are done. There will be a executive session to be held on Thursday, June 6th to discuss negotiations and superintendent support.
Here is your superintendent support, please.
Alright, so 2A1 through 2A6. The force incredible. New fishing herd. ECA agreement, time exploration. Laser combination innovation. Make it ever again. Is there any questions before?
Number four, it was a little passionate for. Number four is actually the minister conference section.
Mr. Gresh? In the body, just go down further in the body of topic. Yeah, go down further.
Any questions to the board? Can I say anything? This is number four, right? Is there anything? Okay. Has this been? Any other comment? Other comments on those areas? For 3A1 through 3A6, do you question?
Sure, I'll take this one. So, the first one, the motion to approve the Act 511. Second is to approve the Section 679. Third is to approve the 2024-25 set resolution, which is attached. Number four is the motion to approve the 2024-25 general fund budget. Sixty-six million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand and thirty-six dollars. Motion number five, that's a breakdown of Act 511 and 679. All the amounts and the rates are fixed. So what Daniel Boone is doing is we're just approving the collections. And motion number six, that's for our tax number upon real estate. Daniel Boone is saying rate of very three point seven six six. And anticipated revenue from that amount is thirty-nine million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand and two dollars.
Anybody have questions on the other side?
For the village rate, is that like a mark that you would be willing to approve? Can we discuss that? Perhaps you want us to overrate?
That rate is at the three point seven five increase that we discussed about. And if you take the thirty-two point five four six, multiply that by a three point seven five increase, you get the thirty-three point seven six six now.
Can I answer a question, Mr. President?
Well, I mean, I owe you all this last time we discussed it because I think that's too high with new businesses that are coming in. If that's something and the fact that you do have a lot going on our school that will help someone that is taking that as too high of taxes. I think we might be in a deficit or our selling ability. New businesses are opening up soon and I think that should be enough to cover the expenses that had. Or at least a large percentage of that.
Mrs. T, are you open on the?
Well, the code of the budget is coming up on Monday, so maybe that's where you can choose if you would like.
You don't have an idea of what's upcoming for Royal Farms or Tripoli or anything in this area, right?
Not us yet, and that would probably affect the next, yeah, our next year's budget.
Any else?
I'll ask just for the record, and I obviously, you mentioned the building. Are we not moving on that yet, or is that still down the road? That would open up something that's.
There are a number of assumptions that we have to make heads in school this year in development of this election. One of the things has to do with what we actually receive from the state. Right now the most that we potentially receive is one point five billion dollars. What the professional organizations that were members with that do this, sort of he believes leaving is this is their world. They recommend that we take about fifty to sixty percent of what the proposed budget is. We're a little bit more aggressive, we're taking two-thirds of that assumption. And we have built in a million dollars in increased revenue coming from the state. That's just one of the many variables that we have. One of the other variables that you talked about right now has to do with the sale of the Leaver Town Road building. Right now, we're still, I would say, relatively early on in that process, we're still getting assessments we have been coming up on the 12th. There are some contingencies that the local township would like to see us make. And with that, there is some impacted property that's not ours currently. So there is a lot of hoops that we have to jump through. The estimated timeline still relatively aggressively falls within the next fiscal year. But what that final assessment is going to end up being, what costs we have to make sure that we're in keeping with what we're required to do as part of the township. All of those builds are still a big T D. We really don't know at this point in time. So it's a little challenging, obviously, these are the challenges that go along with the budget. So we do have built into next year's budget approximately two hundred thousand dollars of from the sale of this property. Because we have construction hours in multiple years to allow the tip to build in a regular generation that is going to be providing. But future projections for tip revenue, the sale of the building, estimates on what we're going to get from the state. All of that information is already baked into the budget that we developed, we went through the multiple budget workshops. All of that has been spelled out. Nothing is out there that we're just saying, well, we might get that, but we're not going to do anything. Like it's all baked into those numbers.
Yeah, it's fine, I didn't know where we were coming from, that's all, because I mean, I've heard that a few times, so just wanted to. Okay, thanks.
I think like the issue of maybe some of the members of the expresses that we can't go back and help you increase. So I think that's the argument, but I'm not with that. But it is kind of place this based on what we could potentially gain. Only thing is, is they're managing, because we don't have the numbers for Royal Farms or Tripoli, we only have those numbers. So setting it at the three point seven five, you mean it's limited amount, it will be an idea like the state as much as working factory. So I think that's the issue just now with the budget and with the whole roof situation and tapping in, there's just a lot of things that, right? I personally don't think we're going to three point seven five, but I know that that is a issue that may be considered if we're going to.
It's a very big decision and it absolutely should be treated with the highest level of recycling possible given. I mean, by all means, we can continue to deliver it. Challenge of things are in connection with the three point seven five price you're not closing the budget considering that capital projects are needed. We still have the budget deficit which is dodging. And that's just including the two projects, not mentioning future track roof here at the high school, potential pedestal not required upgrades today. So there's a lot, and we're just talking about two of the projects, ECA, civil school group.
I think that's the big part of this whole thing, and it's not closed yet, even with this backside. So it is. I mean, we need it for sure, I guess.
Any else? Any other comments?
You know, the board is fully aware of my feelings on the budget and the tax increase. Glad to hear a couple of questions asked at least. And to answer your question, Mr. Gresh, yes, we can cover that tax rate next week. It is not locked in stock here. And I would hope we don't get tunnel vision on this, talking about what you have to build right now with your roof and grade stuff. The one point four million dollars generated by this tax increase is forever. Forever, not just for this year, next year, a year for that, it's forever. So in four years, when you would have the HVAC system done and the roof done, that's five point six million dollars generated by this, not counting the tip for Royal Farms or Tripoli or anything else that's built, we're going to generate revenue. So think about that. One point four million dollars a year, not counting any other future tax increases. Thank you.
Shankoff, a little pretty accurate, I guess my question is, if you know tax increases, and then again, you find out that you need them, isn't there money already in a fund balance that you could use to cover the negative that you're in? We are using the. Yeah, I'm using some of it, not all of it. Well, no, not all of it, but any group.
I can get it. So we're currently got eight million in our fund balance, we got six million in our capital projects. And with the purchase of the train, we already spent four million out of our capital projects. So we really have two million dollars in our capital projects. And with the roof, just take these two considerations, with the roof coming in, nine million dollars, totally right to say. And for looking in the mini, for the sustainability of the district and the financials, for the roof being such a necessary project and our fund balance for capital projects going down around two million dollars, what we're thinking is possibly, do we have to do like somehow like debt? Take out additional debt to fund that process for proof, because it's such a big project. Something like, what I'd like to do is I have to save the money, put it into our capital projects, and then when a project like this comes around, you have money to pay for around the bar. And plus you're getting the higher rates right now and, you know, the district, we're in a good position right now, we're using the fund balance that was put aside, you know, just this one other project with the roof, these other trains. So that's the business.
So after the roof and everything, you still have about two million dollars left in that fund balance?
Well, you take the two, and you got ten, we're going to get about two, and that is, it's not a good position to be in.
No, I understand, I understand that it might not be a good situation to be in, but it's something that it could work. If the money that's supposed to be coming in comes in higher, you might get one point five million from the state. You might, the tip actually might start bringing in money this year, that's what Mr. Volker said, that it was year one, so that's a hundred and forty thousand. I mean, there's a lot of working mechanisms that it could work out, not doing a tax increase or not such a high tax increase. Because at the end of the day, if at the end of the year, you guys have extra money, then you just put it into a fund balance. And then, but it doesn't come to tax payments. And I think there should be a little bit, I mean, it's good that, yeah, at least, yes, doesn't have to be that high a tax increase, unless it's going to be a tax increase. But if you can manage without doing, I think that would be, you know, a good recommendation. Thank you. No, Shane, you know, just standing in the order. See, look, I got a big one.
Christian wrote that five million dollars that we had estimated for the roof, we did not receive a budget for that five million. Like no one gave a proposal for five million dollars for that most of the roof. I think the budget that Jay was talking about gets, I mean, I do this for a living, I got a price for eleven different roofs on one college campus and it did get five million dollars. That's, that price does seem to sense a tie for one facility.
We do have some prices, we're still, and the purpose right now is of grant writing, we have to have that wood go live, of course, funding that may be there for us when it. So we do have some, and they did come in, depending on which one, what is it, whether it be metal roof or shingle roof, it was various things, but they did come in. Five point six, I think it was, was our lowest right now, and that was by, I think it was the Mill Creek. But we're not done with this yet, we also have three, that was our most in-depth quote, we have preliminary quotes through three other companies. But we're not even done with that yet in terms of any quotes, it's a massive project, which needs to be done very carefully, make sure we're in a mess of yours.
Thank you.
Chair, if you want to, Jennifer. I just want to remind the board, we did this once before, and we raised the taxes, and then we came back and we were like, don't need them anymore. We actually didn't need to raise taxes, so I want you to think about that when you go to do this, because we have a lot of unknowns like we had before. But then we realized we didn't need to raise the taxes, we can't go back on that. So we raised those taxes, didn't need them, not sure where all that money went, maybe it went in the fund base, I'm not sure, but just think about that when you open this up, or I guess next week.
Can I say something? Okay, so just for the record, obviously, it's good to see you, but you were on the board last year, and we were misled, I believe, to a certain degree with the previous administration a little bit. So that's part of the reason we're having this, and you were on board at the time. So it's not, it's not a matter of blame?
You're correct, I was on the board, and I remember having the conversation with, they weren't here, but I remember having this conversation about can we reverse our tax increase? I remember that conversation. So don't say that we were misled, because you could be misled right now, not knowing what you have coming in from Royal Farms, from Tripoli.
That's fair.
So you could be doing the same thing again and over and over, so.
Fair enough, but I was just saying that last year, we didn't do a tax increase, and I think part of that is, I don't want to speak for the board, I'll speak for myself, but I feel like that's, we're trying to catch up on it a little bit, unfortunately. And Rachel, you certainly, yeah, if you're thought on that, like last year, we did zero increase, and we don't want to do this. I live here, I don't want to do this myself, but the numbers really speak for themselves.
Well, it makes it harder on the school, but it also makes it harder for the.
I didn't, I'm sorry.
I know it makes it harder on the school, but it also makes it hard for everybody in this community when their taxes go up.
That's, yeah, that's fair. Yep.
Any other comments to call it? For 4A1 through 83, it's a line of understanding for textbook or A P psychology. FBLA State Leadership Conference, and Hershey next year, and questions for the justice. Any comments from the board on any of those apps? Any comments to call it? 5A1, we have some difficult experiments and reservations. Comments from the board? Comments from the board? 2A6, presentation by former Secretary's Office Office.
At this point, I don't have anything.
Okay, the ECU board report, did Mr. Derek say anything?
I do not have, I'm just, Derek's working for it.
The UCTC, I was unable to attend, that's my daughter, my concert, so Mr. Derek went, I like, unfortunately, was unable to be here. It's a recognition for the seniors who are graduating, and it's a bigger time of meeting. The next meeting is June twenty-sixth.
Call the board reports, certainly, there's nothing to report, that's the start of the calendar check. Reverse guarantee. Nothing to report, it's fine, the next meeting is June twenty-second. Any other comment, please?
Ms. Martino, just a question, basically, you all know how often I write to the board, what is Secretary's Correspondence? You know what?
Honestly, there are so many correspondents that came through this past year, I mean, I'm glad to go through every one of them, and I know you certainly spoke, so I'm glad you go through that. So if you give me a few minutes, I will go through, we have questions, we have comments about our vote, and I certainly have the taxes. So I'd be, if that's okay, give me a few minutes here, I'll get this for you.
Lucky, I only ask because.
No, no, you're right, you're right.
At my meeting, there's no report on Secretary's.
You know what, you're right, and I honestly, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, because I, you're not putting me on the spot. It's like, I feel it's kind of silly, because you do send me an email, you send the board. I also got, I'll start, I'll go back a little bit, and I'm not being, we'll knock this out real quick. I got, on May twenty-first, I got a note from Joe Kalenda, I'm not sure if he's here. This is kind of a long one, he said, "Good morning, Mr. Scott," this was after our last meeting. You might as well sit down, this is going to take your while. Anyway, just a note to remind you that in the first half of the 2015, the Confederate flag is still flying over South Carolina's big house. What I saw last night was a perfect example of criticism. Using today's standard of social awareness, offense can be found anywhere in our past. We are evolving, we are an evolving society, people change and they grow. Next paragraph, "You should be worried about offending, you should be worried about offending people when discussing issues. Issues need to be discussed, and the risk of offending someone increases with the size of the audience." For example, "It was a spirited debate last night regarding our last meeting, and you certainly risked offending people during the debate. Personally, I'm offended when parts of our American history are swept away, I'm sure no board member is worried about offending me." I can see, next paragraph, I can see you all are passionate about this, but take some time to reconsider. "You seem to be wise enough to know not to use today's controversial standards when judging the past. A simple question of will you agree to take the post down would have been sufficient, in my opinion. If you look for dirt, you're going to find some dirt with everyone," and then I agree. Personally, I would have thought to dig up someone's posts, I wouldn't have thought to dig up someone's posts from nine years ago, but I guess that's the way things are heading. If you read this to the end, I hope it wasn't taken in the wrong spirit, so thank you for your service from Joe Kalenda.
Excellent, I would love to look back, but at least you're.
Okay, so can I say anything here, I do have a response, actually, I don't have a response. The response was basically that in 2015, a flag was taken off the Capitol Building in South Carolina, I just simply asked him what happened. That was some response, so let's go to, let's go to Kristen Rhodes. I'm sorry, just take me a second. Alright, so this is from Kristen Rhodes on Friday, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Daniel Boone, School Board, I am forwarding you the, I just, I am forwarding you the email that I sent to the superintendent yesterday, which voices my concerns regarding the current state of our school board. I apologize for my ignorance on how things work, I didn't realize Mr. Volker attends all the school board meetings and was already aware of the issues I had mentioned. I also want to personally express to you my concerns, the way the meeting was run. The shouting incredibly, was incredibly unprofessional, and I believe from what I could gather from the audio, Russell was doing a lot of shouting and taking over, talking over other people. As someone in the district who cares about what is being said, that was very difficult to listen to and decipher. The use of the term, I'm not going to say the word, but, well, I guess, I guess I'll say it, am I allowed to say that word? A-hole. During the meeting by several people was incredibly off-putting as well. The meeting was completely out of control, I'm asking all to please practice better decorum during meetings. Furthermore, and most importantly, I'm very concerned about the potential of boarding of Judy Loomis to the school board. In my forwarded email below, I express why this is an issue for me. I think as a board that makes decisions for all the students, including the twenty percent who are people of color, hiring someone who flies a Confederate flag is at odds with the position. I have engaged with Judy on Facebook at this point, and she makes no apologies for flying the flag. She also denies that it is racist. I decided to ask perspective from two families in our district. These families have several students who attend our school who are black children that, I'm sorry, I got it mixed up, sorry. These families have several students who are black children who attend and have attended Boom, I'm still getting this stuff a little bit, but now have graduated. Both of these families expressed distress at the idea of hiring Judy because she flies the Confederate. the Confederate flag. I did hear in the audio to the school board meeting, a male, something to the effect that black people would not be offended. I'm writing to tell you that they are indeed offended. Below are two quotes from the parents of the children I spoke to. I am not including their names for their privacy sake, and due to their fear of repercussions. I assure you, my whole family is offended, and I feel unwelcome and unsafe depending on the situation. When we see Confederate flags, we've heard the history excuse, but feel bad someone wasn't racist, they absolutely would never support the Confederate flag, regardless of their love of history. There are many ways to show your love for history without choosing one that is offensive and represents something so evil to so many. Just to give you a small, one of my many examples, every time we travel, we always have to be aware where we pull over to eat or stop. There have been several times where we have gotten off exits, hungry, and eating gas, and have seen lots of Confederate flags. We then always turn around deciding not to stop, uh, for our own safety and the safety of our children. I'm sure my kids could share quite a few experiences with, with racism in this area, including those that aren't direct or, that aren't direct and show major lack of awareness and privilege. It is, um, sorry. Right, um, it is a problem here and a problem in many places. Therefore, I think it is disgusting that those who are representing our children can feel this is okay. We claim to be so inclusive, and so, let's show sensitivity and awareness to all people, regardless of race and ability levels. To be honest, I started to shed tears when I listened to the post about the school board meeting, of the school board meeting audio that I just listened to on Facebook. I felt sadness and concern for my kids and my community, hearing the evident racism of the community that we live in, yet denying it fully. This is the systematic, desensitized racism world that we live in, where people support racism, racism, but deny they are. And to not care enough to think outside of themselves, and what different group of people have gone through or are going through, empathy can go a long way, and being inclusive and united, it's sad to hear people trying to hurt us to get others to understand racism, and how this type of love of history affects people of color in our community, and still not willing to accept. What they will never understand, and have to experience being white, though refusing to hear and understand this message, and argue, it was most upsetting and disheartening. I mean, okay, you love history, but you learned that the Confederate flag means something so harmful, hurtful, and represents hate to so many, and yet you cannot be willing to understand and accept that, and find another way to show your love of history. That right there, to me, is racism within itself. I'm sure some of my tears were also from feeling the love, unity, and allies of the community speaking up passionately, and trying to sow heart, I'm sorry, to get the board to understand. It gives me hope, which is hard when we, and other families of color, find ourselves just accepting the way things are. I didn't listen to the whole recording, I stopped it because the back and forth, I heard it all before. Thanks for reaching out, sorry I went on and on and on, but you got me going lol. I love my babies, and I just want them to be safe and given equal opportunities, and not be prejudiced due to the color of their skin. From another parent, this is another one, another parent in response to my request for her opinion on Judy Loomis being brought onto the board, my opinion is that it's horrifying. She went on to detail how her children had been chased by racist adults in town, targeted, and being treated unfairly. I'd be glad to gather more opinions from diverse, our diverse population at Boone. I'm friends with the boys' basketball team's parents, as my son is on the team as well. We have a very diverse team that includes at least five families of color. I have no problem asking them for their opinions on the Confederate flag as well. Our children, all of them, not just white children, deserve to be properly represented by this school board. Making this move to allow Judy on this board, when she just denounced a Confederate flag is a very poor idea. It will reinforce the community that Daniel Boone is a racist district. In summary, please do not vote, Judy onto the board, sincerely, Kristen Rhodes. Okay. Now, I'm going to get to your ratio.
Next, Mr. Minister, please, there are a couple of them, you know, so, please.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm gonna, I'll make sure, there was a couple of those. Yeah, there was a couple of those. All right, uh, board members, from Rich Martino, full disclosure, this message has been blind copied to other taxpayers. I'm sure some, if not all, of you are tired of me interjecting myself into the business of the board, but keep in mind that like slash agree with that, I'm saying, or not, you can learn something from every opinion. Beginning many years ago as an NCO in the US Army, through civilian life, having managed multiple or multi-million dollar budgets, and several thousand employees, I believe I have knowledge to impart. Regarding the school board experience, I have had the benefit of working with the best board president, Andrew Basil, and the CFO, Lauren Small, um, in a DBA SD history. And please remember, I say or write, it is nothing, is personal, all strictly business. School board, I have been, as I have already told Mr. Volker sitting in the audience, that I don't see a, a school board meeting. I see a superintendent meeting with the school board in attendance. Prior to the Olson-Cooper regime, there was an item on the agenda for the superintendent recording. Other than that superintendent only, other than that, the superintendent only spoke if asked a direct question. What I see now is most, every issue is initiated and explained by the superintendent, and most questions are answered by the superintendent, not the board president or board members. Even awards are being given out by the superintendent, not the board president. The board should be in charge for their own organizational charge, and needs to take more control. You cannot take everything the administration says is gospel. Just as several board members are new and learning, so are the, is the superintendent and the CFO, who hopefully will grow into their jobs. A good working relationship is one thing, but blind faith is a mistake. For instance, uh, before the vote on the teacher contract, was, I was barely confident no one knew the total annual cost. Uh, sure enough, when I asked the question, neither the superintendent nor the CFO knew the cost, and several board members hadn't even read the contract. And I have to assume that while you were being rushed into a vote, the bullet points given to you don't, didn't address the total cost. Also, after watching a year of unanimous, or near unanimous votes, it was almost good to see this period of conversation by the board members on May 28th. I say almost, because the discussion considering a board member applicant got out of hand, and sadly showed the view of you actually dislike each other. I would hope these feelings, likes, dislikes, harsh feelings over the board assignments, et cetera, don't interfere with your decisions, especially when voting on a new member. I neither know nor endorse the Loomis candidate, but selecting Olson would be a huge mistake. It would be, it would eventually lead to a hostile takeover by a board, by a board probably ousting the current president. Um, we don't need to return to a board that would grant near, um, would grant near lifetime health benefits for me, other improper decisions. You'd be the best served finding a neutral candidate. As, uh, as in the South, I neither own the Confederate flag, nor have, to my, to my knowledge, a image, uh, one on social media. However, while understanding the vehement against, uh, just, uh, dislike by some, I also recognize that perhaps it's okay to know the history of the flag, and acknowledge that not everyone admires the original historical meaning of the flag as being racist. Um, we cannot and should not erase the history of our country, and too many statues and morals have already been removed. I believe the proper position would be to inquire why someone has interest in the flag, not automatically accuse them. Okay, moving on to teacher contracts. Teacher contract, having finally been able to review the teacher contract which you approved on May 20th, I feel compelled to provide my thoughts. Three minutes at this school board meeting simply is not enough time. Let me start by commenting on the responses I received that night. The kids, stability. Uh, nice talking point, but very inaccurate. In elementary school, the kids get a new teacher each and every year. The, in middle and high school, they move to various classrooms, where's the stability? We saved $200,000 per year by the teachers voiding the early retirement bonus. Another nice talking point, but I don't know how to arrive at that figure. Teachers using this clause receive $20,000, distributed at $5,000 per year for four years. I don't believe we have 40 retired teachers receiving this bonus every year, so even ending the program doesn't save $200,000 per year. Other than voiding this small retirement bonus, the DBDA give up, gave up almost nothing. Next point, this contract will cost $750,000 per year. No, it will cost $750,000 plus approximately 35% benefits, and that's only the first year. Add another $1 million on top of that, compounding every year thereafter, in addition to the first year, sounds a little bit more expensive, huh? Next point, the cost is well within our budget. That may be true, but only because we have already added and announced a $1.8 million salary increase to the budget before negotiation even got serious. A very amateurish way of negotiating. Uh, and keep in mind, there are still three contracts to be settled and ratified. And now, and you are now mandated just by the teacher contract to continue adding $1.8 million or more in expenses every year thereafter. Next point, teachers will leave for other school districts if we don't keep up with the going rate. First of all, the PSBA teachers, the local unions to pay, teachers, I'm sorry, the local unions to pay, play one district off another, so much so that districts act like they're, they get, I'm sorry, they'll get a start a little better if they can, if they don't pay more than they can afford. Secondly, in reality, how many vacancies are there in this, the districts? And would a teacher who lives in local proximity, proximity to the DBA SD, um, really be willing to drive, let's say, the MUN for, for a 3% raise and, uh, and, and pay it while incurring extra time costs to yourself? Yes, it was, yeah, but it's, okay. And prior to last night's meeting, I was cautioned by a member of the administration in his preparing teacher salaries to taxpayer salaries. Why? Are teachers more important than the people who fund their salaries? The median salary in this school district, district is just over $70,000 for taxpayers who work an eight-hour day with a unpaid lunch for 250 days per year? Um, okay, our teachers work a seven-day, seven-hour day, 7.5 minus a paid lunch for 189 days per year. This becomes even more lucrative, uh, lucrative, excuse me, um, considering not having to work through the summer, negates, uh, child care costs. Speaking of lucrative, if I'm reading the contract correct, a teacher is eligible for an annual contract increase, an annual step increase, and possibly of two lateral movements, um, for the continuing education for which we pay. That's four potential raises per year. The only concession that, and, other than eliminating the retirement bonus, I could find in the contract is that academic leader and academic coordinator positions no longer seem to exist. A minimal, minimal savings. On the other hand, we actually agreed to shorten the, uh, year from 190 days in 2022, uh, to 2023, to 189 days in 2024 to 2025. With no decrease in annual salary, this amounts to an undisclosed increase to daily wages. Extra duty pay in 2022 to 2023 was $15 an hour, but now $20 per hour. And we, I'm sorry, not only made the temporary Dean of Students position permanent, but we've added a second such position on the superintendent quote-unquote feeling we need one. No independent desk audits or other ROI fact finding has been done. Oh, and the teachers, they retain the ridiculous, the ridiculous $100 bonus they receive if they have to change classrooms. Okay, please understand, I don't begrudge teachers or any worker asking for as much as they can get. Unknown to many, I've actually worked with the teachers' union to organize workers. What I do begrudge is management ratifying contracts they cannot afford, and then telling taxpayers, like it or not, being able to afford it or not, you have to pay more school property taxes. 24, 2024 to 2025 budget. School board members have the dual responsibility of providing a good education and being stewards of the taxpayers' funds, whereas the current administrators, um, current administration seems more inclined to bless it, the employees. Um, you can, you have an obligation to the people who elected you to manage the school district, including the administration, not just rubber stamp what the administration wants. The superintendent claims he had $1.8 million earmarked for salaries and benefits, but at the same time claimed he had a budget deficit, thus starting the budget process with an automatic property tax increase, and letting the unions know there was money to be had if you were be had if you were, if you had, sorry, if you're starting with a deficit that then common sense dictates that you don't have $1.8 million. We keep being told what a financial mess was left by the previous administration. Another reason to not receive Olson, but was simply a paper mess. The money was there, just in wrong accounts. In fact, February 12th, 2024 budget workshop booklet shows a capital fund balance of $6,260,163 and a general fund balance of $8,323,933 for a total of $14.5 million. The proposed 24 to 2025 budget is, I'm just gonna remember, $66 million. The 8% allowable general fund balance would then be $5.3 million, leaving approximately $9 million of the $14.5 for HVAC and system and roof replacement without diminishing the general fund balance. In the next four years, you'll be receiving a substantial revenue from Tiff. Two, you'll increase tax revenue from Taco Bell complex on 4/22. Number three, increased tax revenue from Royal Farms. Number four, potential increased tax revenue from the proposed PA budget. Number five, $200,000 annual savings not having the River Rock building. This listed increased revenue will more than pay for the next roof, next roof plus rebuild the capital reserve fund without the $1.4 million school property tax increase. I suggest letting the new administrators grow into their position and show they can efficiently manage a $66 million plus budget before providing the temptation of an annual addition of $1.4 million available to spend. I'm not sure the single source bid on the HVAC system is the most frugal decision, but low order. No interest financing should be at least researched. For instance, here's an ad I just recently received, and you wonder if Train would do the same. I'm not sure, I guess it said something about, okay, this offer won't last forever. Replace your HVAC equipment with shifley energy and receive interest-free financing for the first 18 months. That's the act. The superintendent and CFO started in 2024, 2025 budget process, planning to raise school property taxes without, in spite of their claims, structuring a true zero-based budget. The increase is unnecessary and unfair to the taxpayers. This budget isn't required to be submitted until the end of June, so you still have time to do the wait thing and not only, and not once again overburden the 21,000-plus residents who trusted you enough to elect you to the board. Rich Martino and the township president. Okay, so I hear Rich. Rich, I did you send me a second one, but thank you. That took a week. All right, hold on, I have Shane, just give me a second. That was today, Shane, right?
True. Great job, Bob.
Thank you. All right. Shane, this is the one from last night. I think that's what she's bidding. Is that what you're talking about, Miss Marco?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, today's the third. Okay, so hello, board, I'm writing, I'm writing about the replacement of Stephen Rittenhouse and the consideration of the new board member. I understand Julia Olson was one of the considerations and another person, Judy, was also considered. I understand why the board board members did not vote for Judy, and I understand why the other board board members did not vote for Julia. I do believe the board should look at for a new candidate for Mr. Rittenhouse's seat. I believe Julia and the board board members who voted for her agree with my reasoning. Several elections ago, this is why you wanted it, right? Because I'm in it. Okay, so several elections ago, Mrs. Scott ran against the city board member, Andrew Basil, and Mr. Scott won. Andrew Basil was voted out, basically fired from his constituent, constituents, I'm sorry, and Mr. Scott was given the opportunity to prove, to prove that he could do a better job, and he is doing an excellent job. If a similar scenario happened, if a similar scenario would have happened after Andrew Basil was voted out, let's say Rich Martino would have wanted to get Andrew Basil back on the board by bypassing an election. I do not believe he would get the votes, and it wouldn't go well with the people who voted against Andrew. Mr. Scott would have had a hard time voting for him, and I'm sure Julia also would have had a hard time voting for Andrew because the community clearly voted him out. If Andrew was never on the board and Mr. Scott and Mr. Basil both ran at the same time and Mr. Scott won, I would see the justification of electing Mr. Basil to fill the seat. Someone was leaving, but Mr. Basil was voted out, and there is a big difference. So my reasoning is not stating Julia would be a good person to fill the seat. All I'm stating is that she lost twice by voters in her district and was fired by the board. Someone other than Julia and Judy should be considered for the spot in a year and a half. Julia can campaign and try to win her constituents and have them elect her. It is asking a lot of board board members to vote against Julia to change their vote. Some people believe Julia did an excellent job, some people thought she made too many mistakes, and some of those mistakes were very costly to the district and taxpayers. So if the board wants to be more reunited, united, excuse me, then I believe the option for Mr. Rittenhouse would have been a good start. I'm sorry to see Mr. Rittenhouse leave, and I wish him well. Shane, give us a, all right. Shane, I don't, I want to make sure I get this, but I think the second one you wrote was today. If there is a third, right, you're going to?
Yeah, I was replying to.
If there's not a third candidate, I think it's best to resolve this, or, okay, I think the best way to resolve this is let a judge appoint somebody, because any other option would bring division and animosity among the.
True.
Okay. Did I just make any else? I think, Rich, I, I, that's, yeah, so, thank you. Wasn't trying to dissuade anybody. I think that's it. Still anybody else in this? Maybe? All right, I think I'm good. All right? I'm sorry.
Yeah, there was an email from Rich on May 21st with an article about why all the schools that were having money from the taxpayer world. Unfortunately, I was unable to read it because I have this issue. All right. Any other comments on that? All right, seven is, I don't know the numbers, but there will be a chance of reading those on the board.
Fairly nice, Mark. You can have an add column for the virtual academies so you can see, you know, by month how many students are being enrolled.
Any comments from the public on the number? All right, for eight is Spirit Village construction. All right, we met on the 28th of May. We went over data warehouse resources, Edit Insight, instituted planning priorities, surveyed data warehouse platforms, implement data dialogues between district office and building and construction, bolster data integrity across the organization and enhance the MTSS model. The Edit Insight contract expires on July 30th. The legal pilot, the next one supports customization and customer service, benchmarking assessments and managing manager, standard its best practices across the district, and has apparent and student oral integrations for GPTs, the benchmarking tool for use on trigger forces and steel standards benchmarks. And we also discussed that the laser virtual academy has brought back 13 students back from cyber academies, and two are going in person. Rich, the savings of $182,000. Do I need to change the number scandal question? Any comments from the board on the construction? Any comments from the public? All right, and the next meeting is June 10th. Facilities and transportation, Mr. Rich?
Yeah, we just pulled this one, and we're several large projects that have gone on. On the HVAC project update, train will be starting on the 5th of this month. We're going to deliver the high school organic portion. On the 17th, UPS ones will go in. On the 21st, work on the art room, Mary will start. Then on August 5th, the crane will be delivered to drop the roof. And all work at high school should be completed, tested, optimized by the 20th. After that, they are open to do work on middle school. That will start after Labor Day, it will be delivery. And then by the 20th, they will be starting to double renovations, these will be cafeteria. And then they are open for that one to be done. There's no fiscal mandate, but they're looking to begin September for that to be completed. The next part we went over was the yearly work summary. This is a compilation of not scheduled maintenance, but issues that are occurring throughout the school district. There were several hundred of them this school year. 78% of them were completed long time, only 91 were overdue, but still completed. And then there's the remainder for others. Majority of that is tied to the heat and condenses that we are replacing, so you should go down to the next one. And this also includes the River Rock repairs, I think. All the fuel tank installation update. It is, so the new fuel tank requires transportation, it's going to go in by the end of August. The cost to the school district is $2,500, and that is for transportation of the fuel from altar to the new tank. And we have the fee for the split fee on certain prices to transfer fuel so that it will only actually get stations and that for school buses. Next part is the fire protection contract is up at the end of July. We currently have four bids for replacement, which will be in our building. All of the school has given those same exact sort of work, and we have four bids for a two-year contract. The pricing range is around $20,000 to $20,000, so lots of talk to leave that for next meeting. So this is for doing inspections and maintenance and ensuring it's been out to the same floor contractors work. And then the last update was on River Rock building, we have a road building, how we will have our appraisal in on 12th, so if we will meet and discuss, we need another appraisal, which is simply one approved by the solicitor that's right now, say, I did, which I brought down the cost of that second appraisal to move forward with this.
Any questions? I know I got one. How would the work be, work gotten on middle school in September affect the students?
So from my knowledge, a lot of it is rooftop equipment replacement, so that will not be affected when they have operations to implement. So typically, in my experience, with what I do, they basically will, you know, shut it down, disconnected, and then the crane will drop it right on, and therefore it will balance that system will be all fine for several days.
I don't want to paint the picture of the city apartment. There may be some times when we have to use some classrooms, but we're going to finally make it worth it in the way that we're seeing this.
I think regarding the bids, I know there was a bid from the solicitor, and there's the other bids, but we have to acquire the solicitor, the origin, verity of the other bids, ensure that is sound. Is there a comment or interest there?
Very good. So from what we learned is that the solicitor has a preferred appraisal better, that it's fish rising after a court, that you probably should have announced. So it will be that the next one as well to try to resolve that issue.
And it's also somebody that's done work for us before, but it's a trusted person. But it sounded a little bit, we just want to have, not be forward to yet.
Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public?
I asked this assignment twice, if you speak. Shane Cockling, you guys remember? My question is, did I hear that you guys are going to be replacing this, the HTRAC system in the school that you're selling?
No.
Okay. Sorry, so the work is the train between Cof3, that's happening at the high school and the middle school.
Okay, so no additional works being done?
No, the only thing that was real on River Rock was the work orders. That includes River Rock.
Oh, they have, they have the main team that will be sold to me.
Okay, so I, there for a minute, I thought you guys were going to be putting in a new HTRAC system within itself.
No, we are changing the arrangement. That's why we want to sell it, because the maintenance, from what I understand, the money we're bringing in from rent is not currently maintenance.
Well, what, so you have a $200,000 maintenance in, with, with the HTRAC company? I mean, the $200,000 of maintenance seems awfully high. I was just curious where that, that number comes from.
That is actual on the amount of maintenance. What was the other?
There's something else that's in that category, you remember?
There's something else in that category as well. Utilities, and I think they're also in that, is the utilities and maintenance of that building is 200.
So, but you keep saying maintenance, is that the HTRAC maintenance?
Yeah, that's like work orders, landscaping, everything that goes with you.
Everything, yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments on the finance, or facilities, sorry? Finance committee reports.
And just roll with our next meeting is all this stuff.
Okay. Or, okay, so, question, one, yeah, one?
Yeah, the last finance meeting was on the 20th, and it was for cleaning, we went over the capital renewal, and then the 40, which are quarterly medical benefits back in, so it's each one of them. And we also went over the fires and health insurance renewal, renewal, and then some property liabilities, cyber, workers' home liability, and while insurance is for the police, and schools, and that was it. And our next, we swap.
Any comments from the board? Any questions? Any questions, any comments in the public?
Policy.
All right, I'll try to do better this time. So policies, we have reviewed committee meeting we had this evening, just before our main meeting tonight. So we discussed four policies. Two-two-two, which calls tobacco and 15, 227 controlled substances, 323 tobacco and baby products, and 351 controlled substances abuse. That was, we did all that, and then when we go into first reading, our next meeting will be on August 25th.
Any questions, comments from board on? Questions from the public? Or business? Questions for meetings? Any questions from board on meetings? Questions, comments from public? New business? There's some presentations by the public on issues.
Shane Cockle, I just want to mention one thing about the teachers contract and their salaries. I know you guys want to be competitive with salaries, that's understandable, but I do want to point out one thing that I know a lot of teachers, Todd Coleman, Frank Petty, if they do leave a school district, I can't think of one that left over money. It's usually administration or how they're being treated. So, you know, if you, if you have teachers leaving a certain building, you know, I would look into the administration next. I'm not saying you have to, it's usually, it's usually, you know, they can make a rough on teachers, and teachers will take only so much, and then I've actually known people that left for a pay decrease because of the way they were treated. So it's not, they're not out there looking to try to get, you know, well, they, they would like to get as much money as you do, but I think.
Just like everybody, just every single job, but also just off the top of my head, the TSA teacher left to make more money. I mean, we've had five people leave just to go to Williamsburg because they paid more money. Like, there's been a lot of people that are leaving, and there's a lot more that are going to leave. We don't, that's why we can't get subs today, because we don't pay anything.
Well, the sub is not getting.
It's the same concept of not paying for subs, you're not paying for, you're not going to keep quality teachers. You have to pay if you want the educated, quality teachers to stay.
Right. But, and I understand, and I'm not saying not to pay them, although salary, I'm saying there's also another aspect, and it's the way that teachers are being treated in their building, they will leave as well. Not saying not, don't give an increase, not saying that either, they're not worth their salary, I'm just saying there's usually more than just one reason why a teacher leaves. You have a lot of teachers in a building, we may, we're trying to get out of that building to another building. It's usually how that building is being ran, so, thank you.
But that's just like any business.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Your business, mine, your idea.
Any other comments?
Hello, I'm Kristen Rose. I live in 1321 C2 Douglasville. I'm the mother of two new graduates and two current high school students, and thank you for reading my email last week.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to get feedback.
Yeah, you just get a little pulled up, or like, hold it, it's a rock star.
We can always hear Shane.
I don't want to be super repetitive, however, I do want to more concisely express my feelings that I sent in an email form last week. I feel this board in our community needs to stop hiding behind their political affiliations and religious preferences, and the trust revealed racism spoken about as a last to avoid being. One of our board nominees, Loomis flew a Confederate flag at her home, and our school board has been admitted to owning a Confederate flag. Both people defended their ownership of the Confederate flag. Judy stated that she flew the flag because she loves history. Russ stated that the flag simply meant rebellion. As school board members, to display a Confederate flag is not in alignment with the public duties and they have accepted. I don't feel that someone who defends displaying a Confederate flag is capable of fairly representing our student body, as 20% of our students are people of color. As a class mayor, I'm very uncomfortable with the idea that someone elected such a powerful role in our district may harbor hate or ill will towards members of our school district who are African-American. I find it unfair to our minority population that individuals who are so blatantly, intentionally ignorant about their use of Confederate flags would make decisions for their students. These numbers do not adequately represent the feelings of our student body, and in fact, go against the beliefs of most of the population of whom, to be blunt, the Confederate flag is racist. A reminder, in a small school district in Berks County, you are making history. I feel confident I'm on the right side of history, as I'm on the side of inclusion, love, and acceptance. I'm on the side of leaving bad history in the past and learning from it, and leaving past harmful practices in the past. I would suggest that if you want to continue to defend the Confederate flag, serving on a school board is not the place for you. Perhaps a school board manning would be a more appropriate volunteer opportunity to do. Finally, also need to be addressed, board member, board members behavior at these meetings is unprofessional, shouting over each other, prevents me from properly hearing the meetings on YouTube, and so off-putting. I'd like to propose video recording these meetings from now on, so that citizens in the district can see who is speaking, and maybe they'll assist them.
You. Thank you. Any other comments?
I'd like to add that against some of the feedback that Mr. Ross heard is the commentary that we see from the audience, it's hard to differentiate before the receiving of a member yelling out from the audience during meetings. They said that much harder to understand was the extent of audio recording, where they can't see the receiving.
My name is David Young, I live in Douglasville. I just want to talk for a minute about transparency, or the lack thereof in this administration. On October 16th of 2023, we filed a rights note request regarding any communications between the head of Daniel Boone School District Security, Jeff Riker, and former superintendent Brett Cooper. On the same date, we filed another rights note request including regarding communications between Brett Cooper and Army Representative Amity Township Police, including the Chief of Police. We also submitted another rights note request regarding each of my family members' names. You advised that no such emails were in your possession and did not exist regarding the first two requests. And regarding the third request, you stated that you would deny that request as we received emails that pertain to a subject under the age of 17, and our son, Roman. You stated in the appeal that you wish to protect the privacy of our deceased son by denying us premises. These findings were then appealed. On January 2nd of 2024, Tom Volker and school attorney Alicia Loop swore and affirmed to the appeals board in good faith that documents pertaining to the first two requests were not in their possession and do not exist. The appeals board found in our favor on the third request regarding our names, rejecting your premise for denying us any of those documents due to the fact that our son was a liar. Months later, we came into possession of documents sent by Riker to Cooper, Cooper to Chief Smith, the Amity PD, Principal Becker to Chief Smith, so on and so on. We have these emails. These emails that Tom Volker and the school attorney swore to an appeals board that did not exist and were not in their possession, were in fact in their possession. When this was brought to the attention of the appeals board, the appeals board stated that we did not notify them within 15 days of the final determination, so they could not assist us. We could not notify them within 15 days, as we did not discover the documents until about 60 days after the issuance of the final determination. In June of 2023, when Tom Volker took over as superintendent, he asked Shell and I if he could help answer any questions that we had. First question that we had was, who was the person that we heard that met our son in the hallway after being sent to the guidance counselor by his teacher, Peter DeNunzio? Tom Volker replied to us several days later that he was unable to verify that this even took place and could not provide us with any further information. About a month ago, we were able to determine who this person was, and met with this person at a friend's house and had a very nice conversation with her, albeit 18 months after the fact. This person confirmed everything we heard happened regarding the interaction with her son did in fact take place. This person also told us that she has heard several outlandish rumors told by employees at AIC and Cardinal Security regarding Nick. This person was a mental health associate at AIC. How, how, one second, I'm almost done. How are we able to find out who this person was, Tom? Tom, how are we able to find out who this person was? You were not able to find out who this person was. Thank you very much for your time. And to rely on transparency.
Just in exactly the way, unfortunately, I can't come up with a list of current in the middle of the legal system.
We are not in any litigation court.
You actually have an attorney, you're going after us, so.
There is no litigation. We do not have an attorney, we are not involved in litigation.
We do not, just, I wish no ill will. I wish no ill will. But the board needs to know, is everything we're required to do by law, we are doing. We've gone above and beyond, and I provided as much information as I possibly can, but unfortunately, there's nothing more, this is handling too much. Please, I can't face up.
Hi. I think you have simplified my understanding of this, but I would, I would say with regard to the board vacancy, I listened to the minutes from our, I listened to all of your last meeting, and it was pretty powerful. And I don't want to address any of those issues, they're very divisive, and I have learned that over the years, no matter how compelling you speak, no matter how passionate you speak, no matter what facts and figures you use, it's not going to change anybody's minds, right? Everybody has their own set of values, you believe what you believe, and you are elected because of those beliefs, and you vote based on those beliefs. So I don't want to talk about what divides us, I want to talk about what unifies us, what brings us together. I think everybody in this room believes that we have our own process. That's why you're here, right? It's the voice of the voters that got us here. So I have some questions about the next step in the process with the board vacancy, because I'm really not clear about what happens next. The way I see it is, the voters had an opportunity to speak in November. I'm very uncomfortable with the idea of vacancies and the board being appointed. Because then, what should be elected, it should be consequences by five people. Meanwhile, in November, voters had a chance to be heard, and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people voted for this president. I would rather have somebody in this spot that had hundreds of votes as opposed to somebody in this side. So to me, the next step in the democratic process would be to put that next person in. Although Shane, you did kind of change my mind. I just made me because I've been hard, but basically, right? So I guess my question is, what is the next step? Are we, there's a deadline for vacancies, do we pass that deadline?
It says maybe over 30 days, if we don't find somebody over 30 days, we have to do this. Then 10 members of the public from that region, region three, would have to petition for a simple point.
So it's just a matter of who gets the most names on petition now?
No, the judge would.
Oh, the judge.
Right, there are 10 people petition, the judge would go away. So the judge would make the decision.
Okay, so at this point, the board can still feel that they can see?
We have no other candidates that are interested.
And you would not consider the next person in the election?
I don't think any, I know I was changing there.
I suppose.
I think what was said was, if there was a candidate, even if they attended this meeting, a region three, if they're interested, there was one before, and if you can discuss why they would go to issue them, I think.
There's, there's no further candidates since then?
Not going to, it's just.
There's also no communication.
Thank you.
So.
So she was having this, where's her?
So the technical cutoff is six, so seven would be the first petition to fill?
10 members of public, region three, have to petition the judge.
So it has to be 10 people for the same person?
10, no, 10 members. If anybody can petition.
It doesn't matter, if they want the same as the judge, you decide.
Any other comments from the public?
So two weeks ago, I was here for the meeting, however, I had to leave early, but I did go back and listen to all the events that occurred after I left. It left me very disgusted, but not surprised. I'm a former board member, and the community needs to know something about some of the board members that are sitting here tonight. Are you done?
I'm done.
Thank you. See, for a long time, I sat quietly on the board, but today, my silence is over. This is way overdue. The community sees you at general meetings, but what you don't see is the conversations after you leave. The way some of these board members, even one who's looking to get back on the board, has spoken about community members. It could have been from anything, from the school assistant conversations, school bus contracts, and so many other things. These board members before you, and I'm not talking about the new board members, or about the board president who you attacked in the last meeting, but the other ones. They have said some pretty mean and disrespectful comments about those in the community they are to be serving. But last week, they came out and attacked someone for a flag, and made them and their personality into something that it might not be. Now let me ask, who are the ones not for the community? The one with the flag are those sitting here tonight talking smack behind the community's back? Who would you want representing you? Your kids, your community, and your school? Let's talk about this. One candidate has a Confederate flag, which they stated they have due to history. Are you going to put me on stake and roast me because I have a picture on my Facebook of a statue in Williamsburg that is a Confederate statue that we went to visit on vacation? So I guess that makes me a racist then, too. The other candidate has on her Facebook that abortion is essential, so killing children is essential? Do you want that mentality on your board? Because I sure don't. Someone that thinks that children can be thrown into the trash is not someone who would be speaking on behalf of our community or children. You all came out with one flag, you all came out with one flag and made Judy into something she's not. You tried to defame her character, that's not leadership. I also remember getting called out by board members for making comments on online platforms, but somehow, now that's perfectly fine when it's you doing it. You see, the board members I'm speaking of and the candidate trying to get back on the board are no more qualified than Judy. I don't know Judy at all, but I do believe in America, and being innocent and so proving guilty. Please tell me where she ever made a racist comment? What evidence, other than a flag, do you have to make such blatant claims that she's racist? I am absolutely disgusted how this board acted at the last meeting, and the community needs to know the truth about those they elected and those who worked themselves back into trying to leave our squares as well. I was finishing myself.
Any other comments from the public?
Any other comments from the public?
Since you were directing that to us over here, I just wanted to say for the record, I have no issue with Judy whatsoever. The only issue is, you know this, that we're on this board. We have to represent everybody. And I think that's...
But if you're just representing everybody and you go back into another room and be calling all kinds of names, because I don't think it does.
Please, you want to elaborate on that?
No, because it was done in executive session, so I'm not going to do that.
Okay, I don't think that's...
Any other comments?
So I do. I'll be real quick. And this is, first of all, I don't know if Russ is in here, so he'll hear this. So first and foremost, I hope he's doing better. So he doesn't... I don't know if you all heard from him? I haven't heard a word, but I hope he's doing better. But this is just me, okay? This isn't an attack on anybody. But the timing's not perfect, and I just wanted to say... And maybe this is to your point, but during the last two weeks, there's been, again, no communication between your side and our side. Unfortunately, its size. There's a real thing here. You guys don't... May I? You guys don't communicate with us, and obviously, we're not communicating with you. There is a big divide that's here. And I'm not necessarily blaming you guys, but I've been here since 2017 and never quite seen it, this dividing.
So you have to remember, we're three brand-new board members.
I'm not attacking you. I'm just saying...
I get that, and we're, again, in this position...
It's not even so bad that you should be communicating. There's one person that actually shouldn't be communicating.
We need help. We need help.
Agreed, agreed.
And I wish you was here to talk about it.
We're several months into this, still learning the rules and the rules of what we can and cannot do. Right, and so, you know, that leadership is supposed to be taken from some of the forces, yes, probably of us, but there are five of you who have been on this board before, know how things go, and anyone can reach out and kind of create that conversation. So you just put us three in a box.
No, wait.
The more, for the first time, being elected. Same as you guys, right? I'm not in some relationship. I didn't come into this with some plan. I ran. Miss Tanya Bell didn't even run for a region. No one ran for a region, and my wife enticed me to say, hey, do this. Nobody's running, and I didn't. Nobody... My first day here, none of you even set the load on me. None of you. Only Chris Smith and Russell there. And Ms. Rachel Marco, Steve Ray. You guys, you walked right past me. I tried to say hello. You walked right past me. No, you are. You got Miss the party. And you walked right back on the board.
I'm not trying to get us...
No, but I get that, and you're making a conversation on something that... You're the leadership here. You're part of the board.
We're actually not.
You are.
No, we're not.
You are higher than we are.
I'm just kidding.
We've not been here before.
All right, it's just... All I wanted to say at the end of the day is, I just wish that how we could communicate. I've never seen it quite like this. And despite what she just said, I think generally speaking on a board was, we always communicated. I'm not blaming you guys, but I'm just saying, that's just me. That's just me. I didn't leave with you best friends, but this divided the board. And unfortunately, it doesn't seem like we're making any attempts here to fix it. And then now, unfortunately, it's going to be a judge.
Okay.
All right, everyone. Thank you.
You know, we all are here with the same hopes. We all have honesty. Our kids do well in every school. And I hope that we can improve our relationships with each other. And I think we need to work on playing well in the sandbox with each other. And every second, maybe others' opinions or views, I don't know. I recommend Team Building, it's a... Some of your drugs, though, is out there.
That's true.
Probably is, or you're...
All right.
I can meet, or I can enter.
No, no, I got something to say.
Okay.
That's one. This ain't going to be good.
My name is Jimmy Alphamani. Want to talk about the board being a part of this shitstorm? Should I mention everyone in the community who is triggered about this whole flag debacle, about what transpired back in March with removal of God from the playbook? Will the so-called Christians want blood from the person involved with removing God from students' personal biography through the musical playbook without the child's permission? Like they want to persecute this person involved with the so-called offensive flag? Did I judge this person about their beliefs or take the fake book just to start trouble for the community? Me as a community member brought this to the school board, and I still haven't heard anything about it. Should I go into detail right now and see what will start up? Or should I have done the same thing that Miss Tanya Bell did and posted on Facebook? She issued Judy, one of the candidates for the school board, with guilty before innocent and cast judgment on her during her interview. On May 23rd, Tanya Bell posted the May 20th board meeting on her Facebook page, conveniently the same day Burress County Democratic Party posted a meeting both referenced listed 54 minutes in. So let's not listen to the whole bit. Let's just listen to 54 minutes of the whole trouble story. See the attached... Conveniently, after three board members asked Judy questions on her qualifications, why weren't both interviews included? This would have referenced Julie Olson's interview, which in my opinion, she did not do well. Then I also mentioned that on the same day, on the same day, one of Tanya Bell's friends shared the May 20th school board post to the Burress Board Today. That's also in there. Where do you quit this Tanya Bell obtained pictures of the flag posted in 2015 despite Judy's Facebook page being private? Who gave her these pictures? Maybe you should all ask Judy, who she is friends with, and what the state friends Tanya is as since her page is set to private. She attacked this woman's character strategically, all for politics. This is what I found. Tanya Bell was friends with one of the candidates, Julie Olson. They serve on the board together. She polled for Julie in November. Julie did not get elected and is now trying to get back on. She showed support for Julie Olson on her personal Facebook page. A friend of Tanya's reacted to her post of May 20th board meeting referenced to listen to 54 minutes in. Then she shared the meeting to Burress Board Today and referenced the Burress County Democratic Party Facebook post. Tanya was actively involved with the Burress Board Today shitshow, especially if someone disagreed with her opinion. This is something a school board member should not have done. The fact of the matter is that a member said in 2023 the community member voted no to Julie Olson. Community members that come to school board meetings week... And I'm going to continue, week after week, saw, now under Julie Olson's leadership, along with Dr. Cooper failed his school district. I am not going to list those failures. You should attend more meetings. Let me fix, please. I'm the title of the finisher.
I'll give them my three minutes.
Here, you want to fix it?
I'll pass the one to you.
Here, you have to read it. I'm sorry.
We have your...
I'll keep the read, here.
This is...
The fact of the matter is that a member said that the community voted no to Julie Olson. Community members that come to this school board meeting week after week saw how Oliver Julia's leadership along with Dr. Cooper failed his school district. I'm not going to list those failures. You should attend more meetings. And I state, which are the community members that actually attend board meetings regularly and the new school board members, for active community members that decided they wanted to make a difference in the school district and the community. The old members are trying so hard to keep their clique together so bad they will do anything. Look at what has transpired last week. This is sick. They want what's best for their clique, not the community or the children. If you don't agree with the school board, like, why don't you ask every board member generally only? And what's really worth of all, I used to have members of folks who experienced racism just so you could get your clique back together. You should be ashamed of yourselves. He should have been able to finish, but anyway. Mr. Volker, I just want to let you know that I appreciate you because you've been great and you're a communicator, and you've made everybody feel welcome, and we feel like there's transparency now. So with all this other things, I really appreciate you.
I do want to add one comment. Obviously, we're in the middle of some prime times, and we both figured it out. We'll get back together. We'll get on track. But I think you started mentioning it best when we were talking about there are so many things that we come together on, and this Wednesday is one of those really big things. So we have students that are with us for 13 years. And on Wednesday, hopefully by the beginning, maybe Thursday, maybe not, maybe Friday, someday, we're going to see our students graduate, and we have some amazing, amazing students that are going to walk across that stage this year. So I know right now it's tough. It's tough. We'll get through it. We'll get through it. We'll find a way to come together because our kids deserve that, the all of us. We'll make it happen. Right now, I think we do have to just take a deep breath. I think summer's coming. Have a good time. And we'll get things pointed in the right direction. But if I just can leave today's meeting with, Wednesday's going to be awesome. We're ready for a safe ride. It's going to be wonderful. Please, let's make sure we remain students and we'll be there. Thank you.